And then. Okay, well, you're done. Never feel coming out, huh? Charlie, you know, hi, so. He's about twenty minutes away.
Yeah. Yes. Really much. Do that orders and start in the past. Yeah, how did you if I uncheckeded?
Is it all for the? Yeah, there's almost.
Yeah, so we.
Time being six o'clock, I called budget meeting. And. No, no, just Shannon. All right, it's kind of redundant, which I think she could.
Yeah. Like just. I'm like.
Thanks for coming.
She's actually getting the budget scheduled.
Yeah.
Good.
Okay.
The next year meetings are started at five thirty, which you want to be posted.
She allowed a lot of schools part of about thirty. Budget.
Yeah.
You missed it.
We are, we're finished, Shannon. They're good. Time being six, I want to call a budget meeting, but we're number one discussing provide direction on council priorities related to two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six budget staff presentation. Um, do you bring?
Mayor Council, thank you. Uh, in your packet, you will see some, uh, topics for discussion. Um, obviously, that's just a few, and I'm looking for guidance on where we need to go if these are, as you, um, I'll just go down the list that I have, but please, I'd like to say just for discussion and, uh, guidance on where we need to go, but ongoing commitment for public safety, I think we've done a really good job since I've been here. Uh, high visibility, we're fully staffed. I think the white cars, you can see a little bit better, in my personal opinion, um, got a really nice, uh, you know, marketing tool there. Uh, obviously, the one thing we do continuously is traffic enforcement efforts. Uh, this month, you'll see our numbers are going up and they'll continue to go up as we have a fully staff and get those officers out there. One, that's our major one, you know, that's what I get to traffic. So we're definitely focused on high visibility in traffic on the public safety side. On the town administration, administration side, um, the mayor and I have talked, and I think, uh, she's probably shared with y'all that we want to look at maybe increasing our reserve. Right now, we have six hundred forty-three thousand dollars there. However, uh, I'll let the mayor talk a little bit more about that. Um, okay.
Um. In some of the mayor's meetings, about twice a year, we talk about emergency funds. Your town has an emergency fund. I want to get closer here and Warren B. disappeared overnight in favor. We're going to be a minus five or six hundred thousand dollars a year. Um, in terms of revenue. So, um, and we're figuring our monthly expenditures, Shannon figured them today, our monthly expenditure of one seventy-eight, one eighty a month thousand. So I would feel comfortable, I don't think six hundred thousand is enough in a reserve fund. I would like to eventually see it be in like one point two eventually. If we can add a hundred thousand a year, a hundred fifty a year from the reserve fund, in case we have a catastrophic event, we'll have funds in there. Because if you keep in mind that, um, our revenue comes from probably sixty percent from that, about a forty, would you say, Shannon, from sales directly, sales and fines?
Yes, that, that sounds like a favorable.
So like that. Yeah, so that's quite a bit of revenue. We lost a lot of sales tax.
So what's what we got right now?
Six forty-three is in the reserve.
About six months. So we go to zero in that revenue because of some catastrophic event, like plus six months.
It's about three of them.
So you can, you can't ever anticipate the future is the most what will happen, but tomorrow, I promise you. And we all know that if we were to give, even a business district, first sight of the town center, can you imagine what that would really fall and deal to have a total? To come to, and I don't get insurance away the public, it was just not having inability to react immediately to those funds that's needed and all the traditional something on a mutual basis. So I think it's money well put away. If you don't have to spend, you've got to have it. If you don't have it, then it, you know, to the citizen, but I've been so.
Sure, we don't have insurance on lost tax revenue. That's, that's the problem.
And this has actually happened to some of the mayors in the cities up north, and so that's why we end up talking about this time as you hear them meetings is it can be pretty devastating, so.
Yep.
We all heard.
So one point two, we cover our.
Expenses for.
Or, uh, uh, gather some over six months.
Six to eight.
Six to eight months.
Yeah.
Say, well, uh, yeah, I filed that in the priest minute, and we can, we always have money left over into the year, so we can.
Put that in the, that's what we were talking, the chief member was talking about.
Keep it out there, and you should turn up here if needed, but whatever we don't, whatever we have, let's go, just start shooting this right out. I'll follow up with that.
So, so okay, Shannon.
Yes, but I'm sorry, I need to ask a question. Okay, I think we transferred two hundred fifty-three last year, or interest reserves. So that helps, and then we can get, we can probably start a policy that anything that's over at the end of the year after you've done an audit, that we can transfer that interest.
That's where we reach a cap of we will also.
What, what, you weren't, so you're not very uncomfortable with that?
Yeah.
I'm sure, I think the idea of the cap, we will be directly back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have a cap on this, and then those funds, the, the account that it goes into, those ones are against us as well, right? So we'll do.
Yes, there.
Yes, those actually, the numbers, uh, just this last year, um, just last, uh, well, since October, uh, we're looking at five point ten, uh, staff on, we had like, we're averaging about twenty-seven hundred a month and, and, and entrusted. So if you're going to the best, we have is five point one, the worst we have is four point five, and so.
It's all with the government rate and all four of our banking accounts get the same amount interest, the same percentage.
Well, I think that is the responsible thing to do, and, um, that is do that as well, you have to say, well, I have someone's business in case something happens, you get like all.
Yeah. We're trying to look into the chief and I've been talking to about some other things like, I know they're going to emergency mobile unit that you didn't count, we'll bring out so that everybody can have their cell phones too. If lines go down and stuff like that, so we're just trying to get some ideas on some different things, what we ever need.
Also, while companies do that as well, they have a ministry.
You know, you bring up an interesting point, and I've actually made a note as a potential agenda for the next meeting that is around our towns and raise the action response. But what do we have today? What funds do we have set aside in case of emergency to solve for infrastructure damage, infrastructure challenges, communication issues for people of our town, for emergency services? That may be separate from our reserve fund, and I'm not sure exactly how that looks on top of it, but something I definitely think that we need to discuss as a council is what our emergency action plan is, and that, that's a broad spectrum on stage, right? Now, it's asked here to man-made issues, but so maybe we should definitely have a discussion about, not just from a budgetary perspective, but also the county.
You have a nice fund to earmark, like that, you'll make a statement, citizens, because I'm telling you, you said, look at the funds that we have, that we have in excess, that we have up over for a budget. Well, anytime that you have funds, and you have them airborne, and we set aside for just one percent, it doesn't matter how much it is, it's there for the reason, it's not for what we give out in the meeting.
Yep. Yeah.
Can we talk to Dana Max about that too? I think they have a backup, they have, we have some backup, aren't you?
Yes.
If, but everything goes down.
Actually, like I just said, like.
They think.
They have multiple different backups.
So we don't lose that.
Yeah, you could, not to run that track, all right, I know they have a backup service on the track, that's still available, or a long-term, however, as an example, but.
Right.
Was our emergency action event asked of this?
Sure.
To us.
Right. Great.
Something, maybe this rather caps me for sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Whole different thing, but something that's been on my mind, and this just brought up. I like you, Shannon.
Thank you.
Then, uh, there, there anything, because there's some other topics, obviously, we'll, we'll go through. Did, I, I didn't want to skip past police. So I just, there's other properties y'all see, please let me know, um. I think we're getting all of those right now, but if there's something y'all think we need to look at, you know, uh, what that would be. And, uh, some of these other, uh, things of discussion, we talked about, obviously, the street improvement. We're doing, uh, phase two right now. There's some other roads that really need some attention. I'll give you some quotes from Chris. Uh, one stony ridge, really bad. There's just some others that Mayor and I have gone, driven around, I've.
West Jeter.
West Jeter. So what we're going to do is we do have a quarter million dollars currently in street repair. So I'm going to sort of focus on that and, and hit the big ones this year. But I would like to, if you're good with keeping that dollar figure for this coming year, we can put that in the budget, or if you want me to increase that.
So what is that figure now, a million?
Uh, right now, the million, that, that's the, the, the project for the last, that was, you know, we had a million budget there, came in seven or something, but though in our budget for street repair currently, we, we budgeted to a quarter of a million dollars, yes.
So definitely.
I think that's pretty, it hasn't been, I think, for you guys.
Just for street repair.
Yes.
Street repair, I did not big project, it was something, but no, if we do another phase three, or we're going to do another huge project, obviously, we go out for our fees and and do the same thing we did for the phase one and two, but that's just for repairs. And I'm, I'm working with Chris to just get some of those. I want to, every year, I think it's important, because, you know, they're just going to get worse. When we get out there with asphalt, do what we can to, to patch, since we don't have public works other than Officer Woods, he's pretty good at it, actually did it in his other town, but anyway, um, that's one of the priorities. I just want to make sure if y'all are in agreement with me, continue to look at that.
Yes, I think we're aligned right from a safety perspective.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, and then some of the other things, the tree trimming, uh, we, uh, in the past, it, uh, waited like a couple of years. I'm proposing to do it once a year, just to, and that's, I drove around, he said, listen, you, it can be a little less, obviously, at the beginning, it can be like from six thousand, seven thousand, you know, every six months, or when we're ready. Right now, we're going to wait. We did one already about a month ago. Um, we're waiting for this, you know, towards a slowdown with the, the lambs, and then we'll go back out. I'll go back out with Austin. Who is our rep, uh, with the tree shepherd, and go through the, the town again, local race canopies, see if there's any dead trees, and we'll do one more round, and we're still having trees dying, all viral roadways, and I mean.
I think, kind of like, yeah.
They're still dying from drought. What we do is.
And then one of the last topics we had on that was to upgrade the council video and audio system. Um, it's, it, it works, but we'd like to maybe look at some different options and bring those, uh, you know, what the cost would be and the type for your, uh, consideration, and also these phones, books are eight years old.
Twenty nineteen, seven.
So it's six, six years old. Um, we would, there's some that are having issues. I know that, um, at the DCDC, uh, meeting, one of the, uh, directors was having an issue with, and did, uh, it, because the other one just sort of died on them.
Well, is it possible to charge these in, or? That I don't know. I can definitely look into that. I'm not really familiar with phone books. But.
Probably not, I don't think you'd work on that.
I would work with Dana Max to see if we can get some quotes, like, if he probably get us some options.
I was going to ask, so Dana Max would help us with, with the audio and video, all as a.
They would be our biggest, or we might have. Hmm?
Just keep it out. Yeah, he's, yeah, all right. So we did, we did this, uh, two years ago.
Yeah, yeah, for the phone book?
No, no, we, we always, we had a few for staff.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, the, the AD equipment, we had a couple of quotes come in and, uh, for, for camera systems, we still think, and maybe upgrade. That's actually how we got this, it's on wire, the desks and.
Okay.
Wait, it was just the cables that ran around the table.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to looking at something else, if they get something better, because a lot of people will listen online, so they have a lot of difficulty um, hearing.
Yes, it's the part of this.
No.
And the citizens will want to think, if we have a fat house in here, our top comes up, and we get a lot of people in here. The complaint that I hear about is in the back, you can't hear.
Yeah.
And it's because of, I mean, we may need some improvements in here, but somehow or other, and I sit back there and look, and he cannot hear a lot of sounds what's going on with the council because of the audio system, so we need to invest better.
Don't hurt someone with this.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll go get some pricing, get you a couple of options, and then present those, and also with the phone books, we'll get that as well, uh, for budget, and, uh, I'll go ahead and keep our numbers for the, uh, streets, uh, maintenance, and then our tree trimming. I think we're going to be okay, but I'll start doing it twice a year versus every other year. I think it's better, uh, for us, we keep it all safer and, um, are there any other topics or anything else that y'all can think of that you want us to, um, research, uh, for the budget?
Is this the year that we're doing the, uh, our bill cleanup phase? We're going to do that every other year.
It's even here, so we.
Okay, so that, that'll be some really useful budget.
Six or seven thousand dollars is budget here for that.
Wasn't. Six or seven.
I think it didn't run about eight, five hundred, I think.
It was like six.
Six, yeah, it was.
Six to seven, yeah, I believe.
We did the, we had an alternative to the, uh, average was twice, so that came out of the budget.
Thank you.
We'll put that back in.
Alright. Anything else that you got? Think of.
I don't think any of them. Lot of them all, um. Like the other answer, we just go like the worst one. I don't know, immediate, like, for the flags and these people.
Beginning, yes.
The flags, they're, they're looking at. They're looking at, they're ball scouts and staff, they're, they're getting some immediate, I think.
Yeah. My first, yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Number two, discussions, uh, provide direction on close tax rate related to the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six budget. Um, staff presentation, town administrator, Ruth.
Thank you, Mayor Council. In your pack, you'll see the last year since nineteen to, uh, this budget year, the tax rate, and we just want to uh, give some guidance on what you were looking at this coming budget evening, and at the seventeen thirty-six, or is there something else that we need to?
There's a calculation we have to do.
Yes, we'll bring that in, yes, so that will come from the camp. Uh, that will be, last year, we got close to the
bumping up against that calculation that would have triggered some form of a violation.
So we will not give those number in the county until we get our certified tax rolls, July twenty fifth.
Okay, so we just need to be aware of that, or we're.
So as of now, I think we're all in favor of leaving it, or is unless, like you said, we run it against.
Yes, yeah, I would say I don't have any.
Yeah, that's, I, 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 I didn't say so, I was just, but we'll get those.
We'll see if, uh, because of the. You increase in that, do we still come over the surplus? Instead of giving that, that, we just decide to take it and keep it and use it for our twisters.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, currently with the tax rate, we're fine. We had, we had surplus last year and participating surplus this year, but, yeah, we'll bring those numbers to you like, Council Grand was stated, in July twenty-fifth, once we get that back, and for you, that will be there, we bring you it at that time.
And it's best practice, like what you guys did last year, is we need the tax rate the same since it didn't cause you to go to an election? Because you don't want to play with that every year, because we residents can get a little tired with that, and you're not knowing where you're at. What we're doing.
We don't have a need to raise. Same.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Um, time being, does anybody else have any other ideas or suggestions, anyone, just guys we got? Yeah.
Then maybe, we're already working on this.
We're going to talk about that.
Yeah.
If that's part of the agenda.
So.
Yeah, for sure.
Can't think of anything new right now.
Time being six thirteen, I'll adjourn the, uh, workshop, and we'll start the meeting at six thirty.
Thank you.
Now, if I hold it down. Yes.
Well, there's only one of them. Very. Why about?
Just wondering.
Uh, he said, well, I don't know.
No, duh.
But somebody made. But it's just.
Hardly, you know, we say, you're like, I don't need to, I don't need to.
Don't clap them, not fair.
And later, uh, which is hands.
One nation.
In the civil, the liberty and justice.
Public participation, if you'd like to speak to council, this is our forum and hand to Shannon. Please indicate on the forum if you wish to speak during discussion on a specific agenda item. Remember, council members are not allowed to answer questions during public participation. Do you have anything? No, me, thank you. Presentation, issue certificate of election statement of elected official and provide oath of office to newly elected officials. You come from around the borders.
I, Jim Roberts, do solemnly swear that I have not directly or indirectly paid, offered, promised to pay, contributed or promised to contribute any money or thing of value or promise any public office or employment for the giving or withholding of a vote at the election at which I'm elected or as a reward to secure my appointment or confirmation, whichever the case may be, so help me God. Title of, uh, position of which elected town of Bartonville, council member place one. Under penalties of perjury, I declare that I read the foreword statement in fact, if they did their inner truth.
Thank you. Would you?
I, Jim Roberts, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of council member place one for the town of Bartonville, Texas, and will to the best of my ability preserve, protect and defend the constitution and laws of the United States and of this state and the ordinances of town of Bartonville, Texas, so help me God.
Thank you.
Oh.
Post session pursuant to the open meetings act, chapter five, five, one, the town council will meet and impose executive session in accordance with the Texas government code. Excuse me, number one, section five, five, one, three, oh, seven, four, personal matters to deliver a considered appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of public officer employee to wit. Town attorney, time being six thirty three from now convenient. I'm being, um, six forty seven, we're convening in just open session, you have a motion?
Yes, mayor, I moved, you just told me legal services. Watson, Athens, Thralla and Ilan, very good move. Sorry.
We need, we need to vote on that.
Yes.
All is in favor? Motion carries five zero, thank you, have a second motion?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve engagement letter, which is going to messer and work E L L C of town of Bartonville, provide different services and authorize the mayor to execute same on behalf of the town, say.
Have a motion, I mean, vote. All is in favor. Thank you, most motion carries five zero.
It's supposed to be.
What party represented Glazer more opportunity deal?
Thank you, reappointed me, I guess I better say something. It gets too long, got me all.
Right. Um, yeah, thirty seconds, yeah.
Watching. Anyway, uh, fluoride is an interesting thing. All once we found out it's not good for you. For years we thought it was great for you. It is good for your teeth, but it affects other things, but it's too much. But I've been training couple of years ago, decided we've got way back. So we are doing the minimum and we'd like to get rid of it. So we're on top of it. And I don't know for sure whether your other supplier, whatever that I need to find out, I guess. If they're putting fluoride in there because they were not dirty was, then you're getting too much. So I'll, I'll check on that. By the way, this is the best place in the world to live this year. Tom, I'm, we voted the best place. On the boat is the best place in the United States to live. We're all different. Kurt knows all about this because he gets all in. Patient time is for opinions and things. And there is a package usually down there you can pick it up and read it. And I think you find it interesting make the point to do it. Brown Paul we've been working on it for thirty years. I think I was about twenty year first. On the way. Unfortunately twenty years. Were all political things. And getting approval of the government this time the other so for less than ten years. We wouldn't been working on getting the job done. Buying the land and all that kind of thing. So that's what happened. We had twenty six customers. It's a whole set company by the way. And. The state had realized. That water is very important say. The second thing on their agenda. Was water. And they're dedicating a billion dollars a year. To put in different projects. To ensure that you've got water. Well water will try. With all the population increase you have. So you're gonna have to turn to lake water surface water. Or foreign part of them. Interacting projections. And we've got requirements that we gotta keep pace with them. But problem. As. See them. They have twenty seven hundred and fifty people and. And. Owned you in twenties three. They're projecting to have twelve thousand seven hundred fifteen fifty. A ponder. Very similar to saying. They had ninety eight fifty one. And they project. In twelve years. Hundred and twenty four thousand. Argyle and Justin are the same say. Argyle they're all about thinking they're gonna have to go fifty to seventy percent. To supply the people. That are coming on board. D F W is the fastest growing area. In Texas and probably the United States. I think they're all come from California. The lake will be completed early part of the twenty six. So we're on the projection board. Obviously it's raining that has slowed us down again. But the day was done. And the spillways are eighty percent. All the land is cleared. We own ninety eight percent of it. So we we're putting water in there now in certain areas. And. I think you know the water line is complete already the eighty three inch line. From Lake Brown Paul to Lake Dallas so that's done. Has a big deal. They're building also park. Have a tap for for face. Vote beers and all that will be coming on board in the next few months. So it'll actually be a place to go. And I thought it is Padonia is a very small little town. But they didn't this is being the tourist business. With all around or one version. Now if you have any questions I'm gonna answer if I can. But I always have one.
Well no you answered everything I.
So listen to read me. Kurt told me about this fine.
Oh then we should they get a stop they didn't get a stop to hurry.
Alright it's stop.
They give a fish put in there to do fishing.
Okay let's get your fishing bowl ready to go I I've got pictures of where you should go. Before they put it happen that all that there be a fishing pier I think it's a sixty foot fishing pier. Down in the lake so you don't have to have a boat concern I've already cut the fish we're stocking it now. So it's a big jump. Starting to feed a hundred million dollars. It's it's over a trillion now. So that's what the cost are. But it's the state has been very good. And in the rescue. Money we didn't have. But they loaned us some money at a good rate. And they don't collect any interest or principal for ten years. And by that time we should have customers. That are buying the water. And that's how it's working. And then they start charging for the. For the interest and then later on the principal those stretches out some twenty years. Without that it couldn't be done. And then like the arc. Another lake that somebody wants to build up there they're having a terrible time trying to get it approved. People are fighting it and. I don't know whether I've been on the lake up there. The sober river I didn't think was that big. When I was up there it's about a hundred foot wide. Twenty foot deep it was dug. At one point. By the people who didn't want the river to go on with their land. So they went up there and they dug the ditch. And the ditch probably wasn't ten or fifteen foot wide. That's how much it's floored shot on down. So this lake is gonna stop that erosion problem. That they have up there it'd be a good thing for them. And so I don't know any other people I don't wanna do it. So that's all I have.
Thank you yeah appreciate it.
Thank you.
Dent County Emergency Service District one chief phone is not gonna be here soon like. Police Department Chief Ray.
Mayor counsel thank you. Then you're back to ill have our a breakdown of our calls for service. Calls for service are up from last time. There's a hundred fifty four calls from service and a little higher than last year we had one forty seven. And happy word for our crashes are down this. From last year we had fourteen accidents last May this May we've only had eight. And all you call types you'll see I just wanna point out one of those and and this is something we talked about in the. Priorities traffic complaints that's probably the what we get the most. Now these aren't all call ins what those are is what we do once we get like. I've probably had eight last month maybe ten what we do is when the officers go out on these different places whether it's Dove Creek. Or Jeter or Givens or wherever McMakin they go ahead and mark out so we can track where we're. We're out there trying to contract enforcement. Our numbers are up this month for traffic stops but I'm happy to report again we have no park one crimes to you runs in a row. Like I said before that's. I've never done that in my whole career so this is very good to be able to report no park one crimes. In the town of Argyle that's crazy we're excited about that. Now the ones that we did get as y'all know were large pieces of Romania just that's incredible. We did have a hundred forty nine close to the fold we had nine suspicious you know activity investigations and we did have two hundred fifty four traffic stops. For vacation house watch. And. On miscellaneous on this packet it says we are expecting to get our car we actually received it last month last week. It was last Thursday so we have all three of our brand new Tahoe's the whitest are in service. Also that's really nice we got it right under a year because I think we had it delivered last June. Which is very good for us you know there's still people waiting you know a year to get get those outfits so. They are adding a lot of technicians so even the other agencies are gonna start seeing those calls coming soon. But we have all cars and banks again for approving that the guys talk about the new cars all the time very excited. Richie officer Richie and Lieutenant participated in a career day over at the elementary school fundraiser. And they were there with the with the fire department and Argyle ISB they invited us. And we get to show Mark the squad car and a couple of other things I also got to participate and carry the load this last month. We did have these are major arrests we did have one D W I. And we did have a person impersonated security guard. At Walter Burger we got a call on that so we did make an arrest on that. As indicated we had bump one crimes this is a little exciting lieutenant actually our agency participated and you all may seen this. On the media operation so Tara Shield as a representative of our affiliated agencies with the FBI. The internet crimes against children task force. While no arrests were done in our jurisdiction Lieutenant Scudder. Provided valuable support to the multi-agency operation which resulted in two hundred forty four offenders being arrested. A hundred nine children rescued. And seized over two hundred thirteen terabytes of illicit data related to child exploitation. That's pretty nice that we get recognized a small set of man department lieutenant you know Scudder got to be involved in this multi. Task force in North Texas so we're very proud of that that he he got to be involved. Also Spirit Day was very very. I think it was successful. It was it was an event that I think everybody enjoyed. But just wanted to let y'all we didn't wait it was nice to be able to. Participate in that issue but have any questions at all about the. Actuary group. Or we had the answer.
I don't really have a question but I do want to share this with you. The thing I hear most from the citizens out there. Over the years is that visibility. And they really appreciate seeing them say that especially on their street. With your visibility itself is who we determine for yeah I think that's probably playing into. But hopefully we don't have the type of personnel and people citizens in Argyle that we have problems with. You know there's a lot of other people that come through that pass soon you know you have that we don't know but I just wanna let some other citizens aware of that and appreciate it. I do get asked from time to time and I've looked at these reports each month like this month we have two hundred fifty four traffic stops. And if you look at at the. Number of. Traffic citations that have been addressed by the courts this for the month of the hundred and twelve. How do you know how can we tell? As to those traffic stops as to what that's generating in the number of citations being issued we have any clue on that?
You talking about money?
No just it's just the. What's the portion I would ask is. Citizens complaining she's someone going four miles an hour I say well you know we've got an officer maybe we've got twenty four seven coverage but. That officer may be out there stopping something over here on. Dire road at the corner down in Frenchy I mean. You're complaining about why don't you bring them over they can't be at all places at all times so. It'd be nice to be able to say okay we have two hundred fifty four traffic stops so how many tickets are we issuing? I can only tell him. You know this last month there was a hundred and twelve citations that were heard by courts.
Oh you're wanting to break them between verbal warnings.
Some of them will not be there is how many actual two or fifty four stops or or is there a big percentage of those are they getting issued tickets?
And to answer your question that's two hundred fifty four stops that we may stop one stop and issue three citations. And you may have a citation for expired registration no insurance is feeding. So those are twenty five stops so. I can get those numbers I break those I can break it down to warnings and citations but to answer your question those are stops. You can issue one you can issue three so there that number is higher if that helps answer your question but. And then you know of course some of them you know they plead out and and that's on that other side of you know judicial system we just. Issue citation help for compliance as we all know it's not about revenue because the city doesn't get that much revenue and. And I think everybody needs to understand that the state gets the majority of revenue it's this. Perception that you know the city's funding and and that's not the case we're all about compliance our officers out there to slow people down. High visibility to deter whether we're just sitting there that that prevents them from speeding. And just driving around the program things like that that may be the reasons we're getting less part ones. Because you're right there's no I can't come up with a formula for that but we know high visibility and law enforcement definitely deters crime so.
Very appreciative when they they see that activity out there especially when you're out down the streets because. People tell me sometimes they see them three or four times a day well that. There was a time when we'd see them maybe once a week so yeah that's a it's great that we have that type of coverage.
We'll keep them out of the office.
That tells them that you're out there doing the job.
What hours are we running two squad cars because we have the daytime shift and then we've got. Well currently with you know right now we're still doing the six A to six P so on day shift you could have three here. We still haven't been able to do our power shift yet because we still have an officer out on medical. Once he comes back all border column. He'll be we'll be able to run two squads up to ten o'clock. From because that officer is gonna be coming in from two to ten. Currently we you know we have two to three officers including myself on a day shift we could have lieutenant me and and an officer. Of course for training so lieutenant is actually working nights deep nights tonight. Next week I'm gonna be working days because we have an officer that's gonna be out so. You know even though. While there is out we still have lieutenant I'm not gonna hold the deep night shift for a while I've done that but I'll hold a day shift. I don't mind the six to six but yes we'll be able to once we. Get fully staffed again we'll be able to have that full coverage and have two officers on the ten o'clock Monday through Friday.
You have a question?
No thank you chief.
Administration Shannon.
Thank you Mayor before I start in on the financial survey I just wanna add on a little bit about court. They have up to ten days depending on seek and discuss the options with court and then sometimes she's scheduling them for court that could be two to three months out depending on what they're scheduled upon that. So there's a little bit of the merit to come as well.
Yeah and that this period on the court this. That's you can't really compare that with with what's been happening on the streets because. The timeframe can be two three or four weeks out so yeah. Anyway I appreciate that thank you.
Okay we are actually in month eight of our fiscal year. So I'm starting on page twenty four of your packet it's all general fund revenues. And at the end of month eight we typically wanna have collected at least sixty seven percent of the budgeted revenue. Right now looking at this spreadsheet we have collected approximately eighty seven percent of revenues thus far. Leaving a little less than thirteen percent to be collected over the next five months. So we are doing really good and we are still collecting a little bit of property tax revenue we collected this month almost two thousand dollars. So we're over three thousand dollars in property tax revenue. So we are doing really well with our revenues right now if you go through the list on here you wanna look at development fees we are a hundred and forty eight percent. Opened we collected. And permit fees were over twenty three point four percent so we're. Doing really well right now with our revenues. You may have any questions before we move on to the revenues?
So.
I saw you looking so I wanna make sure and stop for you. And page twenty five in your packet is the sales tax collection. Sales tax revenue received in May was a hundred and eleven thousand dollars four hundred and three dollars which was the sales tax collected in March. So it was very healthy it was the quarterly payment. Of those that pay their quarterly their sales tax quarterly to the state that we get. I did look and I got the. Sheet today from the Tom Fuller's office and we received a hundred and four thousand for this time. Hundred and four thousand three hundred ninety eight dollars and eighty cents thank you. So it's gonna be another month but it's very helpful. Moving on to page twenty six which is all general fund expenditures. Right now as we talked about we wanted to make sure that we have collected sixty seven percent of the budget revenues we also wanna make sure that we're staying under sixty seven percent of. Expenditures for month eight. And right now if we look at this we budget remaining is forty five point sixty four over all four departments administration police municipal court. Our transfers so right now we have forty four fifty four percent of the budget remaining showing us to be under budget by approximately twenty one percent. We're doing really well right. And then if we wanna go to the next page and break it down just for administration. We actually have forty four percent of the budget remaining so we're still working on just in the administration department. Take a look you have any questions please stop me. And then it's the same with police they're actually have fifty percent of the budget remaining so they're very. Under budget as well so we're. Being fiscally responsible. You may have any question?
Are you using word please?
No. We can't really get to that.
Thank you, Shannon. Consent agenda, this uh, agenda consists of non-controversial housekeeping items required by law, items maybe you approve with a single motion, items maybe removed from the consent agenda by a council member by making such a request prior to a motion or vote in consent agenda. Number one, considerable of the May twenty twenty twenty-five, regular meeting minutes?
Yeah, I'm making motion to move through May twenty twenty-five revenue.
I say, all of your paper. Motion carries five zero, thank you, Council. Public chair, engineers, regular items, number one, presentation consideration official year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, audit presentations by auditor Valerie Habersham from M V N H group.
Good evening, um, I'm Valerie Habersham, Chairwoman, Chairwoman of the Audit for the Town of Bartonville. And we're here to look at the year ended September thirty of twenty twenty-three. And so before we kind of go away, but I just wanted to address, obviously, we're a little later than what we want, we're just now looking at twenty twenty-three, we had um turnover in in the town, and then we also, by the time that was ready for us, it was in our busiest season, and so it took us a little bit longer to process than we would like, so I apologize and appreciate your patience, that we are just now giving this to you. Uh, it's my understanding that the consultant is getting pretty close on twenty twenty-four, so hopefully I'll be back up here with you um in the coming months, and we'll be caught up again um pretty soon. So overall, though, um despite the the um the late time of it, the audit went well, we really appreciate Shannon um and Debbie and everyone that has helped kind of get this together and um and appreciate that, we only actually had one audit adjustment, um, which is just kind of a minor thing, so um, that was great, and we had an unmodified opinion, which is what you want to see. Um, so typically, particularly when um the numbers are kind of old, I'm just gonna hit the highlights with you and point out how the report works. If you have any questions or want me to go into any more detail, I'd be happy to do so. So I'm just gonna focus on this bound report here and point out a couple of pages to you. First section, our number page one, that's our independent auditor's report, and that's where we provide an opinion, it says we believe the financial statements are fairly presented. I like to say that's as nice as we get as auditors, moving in that you'd like to see. Um, going over to page five, that starts the management discussion and analysis. Um, and this provides kind of a conversational um approach to the financial statements, it also provides some comparative information. So if you look on page seven, that shows your um town's net position for the city as a whole. So it says your assets liabilities, and the difference between the two is your net position. Um, the town ended tw- nine thirty twenty twenty-three with eight point two million in that position, up from about seven point five million the year before. So about um seven hundred thousand in growth during that year. Um, page eight, um, the top of page eight then shows the comparative revenues, expenses and your increase in that position. So you have three point five million in revenues for and that twenty twenty-three year, about a hundred and fifty thousand the year before. Expenses are two point eight million, um, and ultimately that increase in that position is six hundred and seventy thousand. Um, and then past that, uh, we get into the basic financial statements, which starts on page eleven. Um, there are two types of financial statements presented for um governments, this first set is called the government-wide statements, and this has all of your assets and liabilities. Um, so this is where you're gonna see your capital assets and long-term debt. Um, we kind of looked at the the compacted information in that um M D and A, but here is the full statement. I'm gonna again showing that total net position of eight point two million. Page twelve shows your statement of activities, which is your expenses, revenues and your change in that position. This statement is a little unusual, so I'm just gonna walk you through one line. And the first column here is expenses, so we usually start with revenue, but our focus in government is how do we spend the resources we have, so the first column is um expenses. And the first one is for general government, so the town spent one point four million um of expenses on general government. The next three are direct revenues that are associated with that specific department, so two hundred and twenty-four thousand in charges for services, another twenty-three hundred in operating grants. And then that final column gets you to your net um cost of that department, so the general revenues, I mean, the general government, less direct revenues, would cost one point two million. You kind of follow that down, public safety was six hundred and eighty-six thousand, public works was six hundred thousand, so for the total net cost of government activities of two point five million before your general revenue, so then the next section shows those revenues that are revenues of the city, not applicable to any one department, so your property taxes, sales taxes, franchise fees, interest income, which gets to your total general revenues of three point one million, obviously that is most of what funds the city um to your increase in that position of six hundred and seventy-eight thousand. That's kind of an unusual format, so I like to just walk through one. Um, the next page, page thirteen, goes into your governmental fund statements, um, in these next two statements. Um, this is what we call a modified accrual basis, so there are no long-term assets, no long-term debt, this is intended to be more like a budget or cash basis. Um, and the big number that I like to point out here is your unassigned fund balance in your general fund, um, which is one point eight million, and that is a okay healthy number, I know y'all were talking about your reserve earlier, this is gonna be a little different, because it's the um, the fund balance is just the difference between your assets and liabilities, and then the unassigned fund balance is whatever's the difference between them, that's not already restricted or committed by something else, so you also have a big um a good amount of just committed um fund balance, so there's streets and vehicles and debt service, and that commitment is from council and can be undone by council, so um, but overall, general fund looks healthy. Um, and so those next several statements are looking at the funds themselves, which again is just that different basis of accounting. Um, and then past that goes into the notes of the financial statements, there were no new notes this year, no changes, and there's the same county policies. Uh, so this just provides additional information about the town's county policies. Seventeen starts the notes, it's man. So the the first one, um, and the first several pages is just accounting policies. And then we actually get into kind of some um numbers, starting on page really twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four shows the town's capital assets, and the increases and decreases during the year. And then page twenty-five shows the town's long-term debt. At this point, there was still um a portion of long-term debt, that was the the only remaining piece that has since been paid off. Um, and then, starting on page twenty-five goes into the town's retirement plan, this is the town's participation with T M R S. Um, and I like to point this out, because it's probably the only time you see this, so if you look to page twenty-eight, um, you'll see the calculation of the town's net pension liability. And so uh, the town puts based in T M R S and pays monthly as due employees. Um, and at the end of every year, at the end of every calendar year, T M R S has an actuary that goes in and estimates the town's liability related to the um the pension. And that's that first column A, the total liability is one point five eight million. Um, but then also T M R S holds funds for the town of Bartonville, that's gonna be used to pay that um in the future. And that plan, that position, that one point two million is assets held um at T M R S for the town. And the difference between the two is the net pension liability, so it's two hundred and thirty-four thousand, um, which is the difference between the liability and assets held at T M R S. I will say that this this measurement was done at twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-two, the market was down at that point, and so we've seen that number improve, um, but overall, that's still, um, the the town's responsibility is really to continue to pay T M R S at the rate that they give you, which I've always done. Um, and those are really the highlights in the notes section. Um, past that is the required supplemental information, page thirty-four uh shows the vegetarian comparison schedule for the general fund. Um, again, this is twenty twenty-three, but the resource expenditure, resourcing for over budget expenditures were under budget, so it looked very healthy. And then there are just some additional schedules um to to finish up that section. And then the final section is your internal control of compliance um section, so we perform the audit in accordance with government auditing standards. And so we are required to report any movement we identify, we consider to be a material weakness, there's some deficiency. This letter states that we did not identify any such things, um, which is good news, and so that is what this final report says. And I know I kind of whipped here's quickly, I'm happy to go into the more detail if you, yes, sir.
Question, page twenty-four. Uh, in your depreciation, police, you put the numbers, vehicles, and just included in that?
It must be, yes, sir.
We had decreases, I guess we have fifty-one thousand decrease.
So that's disposals, fifty-one thousand.
That was a disposal, that was asset.
Yes, sir, so the depreciation is um that that is shown as an increase in the cumulative depreciation, so the three hundred and forty-nine thousand was, is the depreciation expense that was taken. Uh, you do straight line depreciation, um, and typically by the search period.
Thank you, great, all right, thank you so much.
Thank you soon, soon.
Yes, so. Number two, discussing the certain final platform, eight nine point two six one acre property situated in in the Pits and Wells survey extract thirteen thirty-nine, and what?
Who would accept that?
Oh, you want a right motion, okay.
I want a motion that we have searched the uh, this year, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, five.
All of the paper. Motion carries five zero. Number two, thank you, Shannon. Number two, discussing the certain final platform, eight nine point two six one acre property situated in the Pits and Wells survey extract thirteen thirty-nine, and then T T J, Town Department of Texas. Property is located generally East State Highway three seventy-seven, between Keith Road and Smooth Lane, the applicant is G M Seville. On behalf of Spur, First Branch Development Health League, Town of Bartonville file number is F P two thousand twenty-five zero, they're all gone. Planning zoning commission recommended approval by vote of five to zero, eight June fourth, two thousand five by meeting, staff presentation, right?
Okay, I need to recuse myself, it's an existing, this is a motion, so.
Thank you, buddy.
Thank you, Mayor of Council, uh, Mayor of Iowa, the town planner for the town of Bartonville. I'll be giving the staff presentation for High Plains at First Ranch, Phase One, the final plan. So, uh, what you have before you, Nick, is a final plan that would create two hundred and sixty-seven residential lots and three non-residential lots within the first ranch project. These lot sizes range from six thousand square feet to upwards of twenty-one thousand square feet. There's some of that open space, larger kind of amended lots. It's located in the western Bartonville E T J, and uh, the preliminary plat was approved with conditions by council in August of last year. So this is a eighty-nine point two six one acres total of, out of the larger two hundred plus acre project. Uh, it, the overall project consists of five original plats, and they broke it up into a number of of phases, and um, again, in the western Bartonville E T J, east of State Highway three seventy-seven between Keith Road and Smooth Lane. So with the preliminary, I'm sorry, with the final flat, we look at the four criteria from the Bartonville Development Orbits to evaluate consistency uh with our standards, at first, and the most applicable one here is the uh conformity with the approved preliminary plat, again, approved by council conditions last year. Oh, there we go. Um, so uh, through my evaluation, I determined that the uh Phase One uh configuration, lots, streets, uh, matches Phase One of the approved preliminary plat very, very closely, with essentially one exception, in block twelve, there's a bunch of blocks, and within each block, there are a number of lots. Uh, block twelve has one additional lot that they uh added. Um, that's relatively immaterial in the grand scheme of things, it's less than one percent of the change of the total number of lots. Uh, so I feel like that was a materially, uh, you know, impactful. The street configurations from the preliminary plat are are followed here in this final plat. Um, i- i- in addition for, including that one hundred and forty-foot offset between uh Busman's Trail and Pepperby Lane. Now, our standards require generally at least a three hundred foot offset between streets to avoid a conflict with turning movements. You may recall that in your approval of the preliminary plat, you approved a waiver of that standard in this specific case, just because it's below traffic bounds and mostly anticipated for this particular intersection. And so that continues to hear the final plat. And um, there's uh, and the third uh, under this criteria is whether there are conditions of approval, and whether they're met. Um, they are, uh, in in the staff summary, there's a list of all the conditions that uh that council approved, some of them don't apply, because they kind of apply to other phases of the project. Um, but I did note where they are met or whether they're not met. Um, there was one condition of approval that I'm recommending tonight through the recipe, uh, deficiency, um, in the uh, in the final plat. So the other three criteria, uh, number two is engineering construction plan review. Because this isn't the uh, the E T J, and subject to the local cooperation agreement, the town doesn't have any part to play in reviewing the construction plans, and that doesn't apply. Um, there's no zoning in the E T J, so criteria on three doesn't apply. And criteria four relates to onsite sewage facilities, because this is going to be served by sewer from another service provider, we didn't have any review uh elements related to that criteria. So the planning and zoning commission, as the mayor's stated, uh, recommended unanimously of approval of conditions, and there's a single condition that carried through uh P N Z, and that's simply that prime recordation, a drainage easement shall be established over the entirety of block two X, block twenty-two in the final plat in order to protect and permit the receipt of stormwater flows. That's because during my review of the final plat, I observed uh, stormwater outflow on this particular lot. And in order to protect and make sure that that stormwater can carry onto the lot and receive stormwater from the public rights of way, you need to have a drainage easement on that, kind of a technicality, but want to make sure that followed through, it was legal when the plat was reported. So that's the only condition, I am happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you, thank you. Have a motion?
I want your motion to be approved, the final plat, I think, eight nine point two six one, property situated in the wild survey, that's right.
Really, you put that condition. You can just send it to them. Have a second? All of the paper. Motion carries four zero, don't you can? Consider preliminary platform thirty-two. Thank you, Chief. Number three, discussing the certain preliminary platform, third, two point oh, three nine acre property situated in the J work survey, extract number forty-two, the town's lot in Hill, Dent, Dent County, Texas. The property is located near the South Street, Florida, Broom Road and Porter Road in Bartonville, Texas, the applicant is McAdams, Inc., on behalf of the Bill of R and W, that's right. Town of Bartonville file number P P two thousand twenty-five zero zero one. Planning zoning commission recommended approval by vote of five zero, and it's June fourth, two thousand twenty-five, by meeting, staff presentation, right?
So this is the staff presentation for the vice-ranch preliminary plat, town of Bartonville, project number P P twenty twenty-five, service for one. This is a submitted preliminary plat, create five new lots out of two existing lots. Uh, the preliminary plat shows three two-acre lots adjacent to Porter Road, and two lots that are greater than ten acres uh interior to the property, uh, but abiding Broom Road, one is a ten acres exactly, and the other is a little over sixteen acres in size. Uh, you may recall that there was a minor plat for the three, sorry, the four adjacent lots just to the north, that was approved by the city in September of twenty twenty-four. There was also a zoning rule, uh, that basically encompasses uh the, what what contains the the two acre lots up against uh Porter Road, and then to the uh, to the east of that is all zone and agriculture. So again, this is thirty-two point zero two nine acres, two original lots, legal lots right now. Um, and it's located on the southeast corner of Broom Road and Porter Road. Uh, for the preliminary plat, again, we look at the Bartonville Development Origins for the critical criteria. First is whether the preliminary plat conforms with the approved land study or other studies and plans. In this case, we didn't uh require a land study, that hasn't been a very consistent practice with the town, and with the property of this In this case, we didn't uh require a land study that hasn't been a very consistent practice with the town and with the property of this size, it's really kind of a superfluous practice. Uh, however, we didn't have a developing review committee with with a meeting would be supposed to. Express our our thoughts and concerns and make sure that we were having early, bit early communication with GATP. Uh, second is whether the preliminary layouts of required public improvements have been approved by the town engineer. In this case, this property will be served or this project will be served by existing utilities, which are adequately sized, so there was no. Need for uh a civil plan or additional public utilities to be designed and more submitted for review. Criterion on three is whether the platform forms to applicable zoning other regulations. As I noted, the two acre lots on the left side of the image all fall within an RE two zoning district, which approved last year by the town. Uh, the larger lots on the east side of that are all within the agricultural zoning district. So if you look at the requirements for both of those districts, there were a couple of elements of the project that. I found were uh in need of some correction, and so there are a couple of recommended conditions of approval for the planning and zoning commission before you night. Those uh relate to uh the uh street frontage widths for lots one R one. Which is uh, there in the agricultural zoning district, there's a requirement for at least three or be along the street frontage, and this one is shorter than that, so there'd be a correction needing to be done there. And I'll read the conditions that spell that a little bit more clearly. There's also a requirement for uh the setbacks in the ad zone, they show twenty foot setbacks along the property lines, in some cases it has to be fifty feet. And then with the widening of those setbacks to fifty feet, there's accessory building that might fall within that fifty foot setback. That would be a nonconformity, so there might need to be some shifting of the shared property line between the two large lots to prevent that. And finally, uh, number four, onsite sewage facilities, uh, our standards require that the uh registered sanitary area to review all the lots for adequacy for septic. And so that's a a condition that's included here that we're in as well. So the planning is only commissioned unanimously recommended approval with conditions uh at their uh meeting earlier this month. There are a number of conditions here. Number one, uh, prior to the renovation of the final plat. Uh, and accompanying planning materials, uh, they shall be reviewed uh and approved by the registered sanitary area. Again, this is standard practice for all properties to be served by a septic. Number two is that prior to approval of the final plat, all setbacks for lots one R one and two R two block A shall be fifty feet. Those are the two large lots in the ag zone. Number three is that prior to approval of the final plat, the Broom Road street frontage width for lot R one, one R one block A shall be increased to no less than three hundred feet. Number four, that prior to the approval of the final plat, the shared lot line between lots one R one and two R two block A. Shall be adjusted to avoid creation of any nonconformities between existing structures and dimensional standards as they apply to the new lots. Again, that's the accessory building that could fall from that fifty foot setback, and we cannot legally create a nonconformity through approval of a local plat. Uh, five and six are just minor corrections, uh, one is just a labeling, uh, number five is just a labeling correction, and number six. Is uh, that says minor replat on the uh, on the document, it should say preliminary plat, those are describer's corrections. And finally, uh, as recommended by the planning and zoning commission at their meeting. Uh, number seven states that gated driveway shall have the gate or a present call box. Like located no less than fifty-five feet from the edge of Broom Road or Porter Road rights away. Uh, Councilman Crandall set a second precedent here, so now that we're seeing gated accesses, it was the potential for large vehicles with um. With trailers, we're starting to include that in our conditions to make sure we don't have any uh. Vehicles in the right way, stop while waiting for a gate to open. So those are the seven conditions uh recommended by the plan and zoning commission. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
So why are we involved now for them to meet the uh, these conditions?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
These conditions, um, these recommended conditions that uh, we said them. What stage are they in? I mean, you look at the survey, you got these marked out like the three hundred foot. Performance is, has they all been met?
No, they would have to, the the conditions apply to deficiencies in the document in your in your packet. So for example, a lot one R one, if you look at the width of the frontage on Broom Road, it's less than three hundred feet. So when they submit the final plat, that will have to show that correction in place for us to be willing to consider it for approval.
So what kind of timeframe you looking at? Is it up to them?
It's absolutely up to them. We have a one year um. Active, active period for the preliminary plat, so they need to submit within a year. I'm sure they'll submit it pretty soon, because they're, I see, I went out there today, there was for sales lines out there, so I'm sure they're.
Yeah, I think they were doing it in the, doing it much, they want to get that done, I was wanting to clarify, but what they would have to do in order to. Get to comply with this to get to the same meeting.
Sure, and the applicants here at least, so you could also ask them there's, I think, appropriate time, but. They would just have to fix, fix the document. There's not any physical things on the ground that they're gonna have to do to make it uh eligible for supplemental approval.
Next one. Final plat, and they still want to do that, yeah.
I know one of the concerns that was raised at the VRC um. Was that the driveways to individual lots, it would, it looked like they were gonna go out to Porter. Or, um, I think one lot could probably go to Broom once it, uh, there was a discussion about creating some sort of a. An access via Broom where all those certain properties can do that, so I guess that's not an option, or I don't know.
It's certainly an option. Um, that's not something that they are showing as proposed to you. You would expect to see an access easement within lot two or two kind of. Carry that, um, but. That's really, it's really up to the council. Um, I mean, I I, like I said, I went down there because I wanted to see it myself. Depending on the day, time of day, the the speed of the traffic, it could either be a hazard or could not be a hazard, you know, so it's.
You you press that deal and those are blind drive, pressing that deal, so it creates a safety concern in my mind. Um. I'm not sure if that's a condition that we can as council put on there or not, um.
So any conditions must be based upon your subdivision regulations and ordinances, so. If it is a requirement in the subdivision regulations and ordinances has not been met, then that may be placed as a condition. If it is not required, then you may not.
It's not, thank you.
Uh, yeah, I don't, I don't think it's in our our conditions. Uh, it was just a ask that we had, just it, it creates a safety issue, so then. Once these houses are developed and a safety issue occurs, then it. People are gonna start coming to council and say, what are you gonna do about this? And. What can you do about it at that point? There are the houses who have already been built and driveways are already in. Um, the only thing we can do is put some signage of a. And we have our officers, they're they're trolling the town, they're pulling people over, but it can be everywhere at all times and. Unfortunately, we have a lot of cut through traffic. They pull a lot that have.
Truth to just create a um, a liability for the town, some gets, if they have a driveway and then there's a crash, because it's, okay. Okay, cool.
Right.
No, thank you.
One of the patents a little bit larger shows to the other side of order, yes, well. Oh, yeah. I don't think I have that one in here, sorry.
That's okay. The reason I asked is that there's several properties directed across from those and all their access. No, that's true, there are.
Those are all um, two acre lots, I think, on the uh, west side of Porter Road as well.
Never mind, too, one of them.
Yeah, because probably it is because this personal possibility of them pulled out.
Yeah, I understand, I mean, very, very.
Yes, it's just a concern, that's one of the noises.
Especially the bicycles going down the deal, we have six more drop, what's going on?
Yeah, it's, I don't want anybody to be hurt, so. In this council and Crandall state, we did bring that up during the meeting and asked, and they said they'd take a look at it, but. I, and obviously, I don't think they put that in design, because that was a concern. Yeah, I don't believe there's anything in our development or in this, that, which I, even, that is. I'm saying that is, I just seriously don't ask and just be concerned.
Any other questions? Have a lot.
I'm going to approve preliminary plat of thirty-two point oh two nine acre property situated in Jay Burke survey. Uh, abstract survey number forty-two, Town of Bartonville, Benton County, Texas, with the seven conditionals issued.
I say.
All of them, very good. Motion carries five zero, thank you, Ken. Thank you, Ryan. Number five, discussing consider resolution appointing new members to Bartonville Community Development Corporation, staff presentation opportunity.
I'm speaking, I'm.
Oh, sure, yeah, number four, we're going to table until next month, so I can review the orders. So we're looking at that. Bye.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Yes, we have, now have three vacancies on BCDC. And there's one for expiring in twenty twenty-five, and then there's two terms that are expiring in twenty twenty-six. We have received one application thus far and it's in the packet, and if you do choose to appoint her, I would uh recommend that they appoint her to the September twenty twenty-six. Expiration date, so she's not reapplying next month when we start doing annual appointments.
I think she'll be a good, Laura, Laura Smith.
Yeah. She's a twenty-five year resident and she's best in my community, so.
She's been on Bartonville bed.
Yeah.
Number one, have the motions?
I have a motion. I think a motion that I appoint a new member, and do I need to name? Laura Smith, Laura Smith to uh the vacancy and the BCDC.
So.
Let the term expire in September, term expiring September, thank you.
A second.
Thank you.
All of them, very good. Motion carries five zero, thank you, Ken. Number six, discussing considering moving forward with the town hall parking lot expansion, staff presentation, she three.
Mayor Council, uh, as a month or so ago, y'all directed uh us to take a look at expanding parking. As we all know, parking around here can be challenging in times of our devastate. So we did go out and and get with uh our city engineer, that was uh G-Rod, the current company that's doing our phase two. They went back to all the twenty spaces and you'll look at your packet, there's options, we got concrete or asphalt. And there's different uh types of, I'm, I'm gonna go through this, if you ask a lot of difficult questions. You may have to refer to Chris, he wasn't able to be here tonight, but if you look at the um, the first uh concrete parking lot with compact subgrade. Where concrete is one oh six, with the asphalt, it's gonna be seventy-five thousand. Just so you know, this is turnkey, that means they're gonna go ahead and uh go ahead and clear out all the trees, go ahead and do the 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 um. Trough soul, I mean, scan it, so this will be turnkey. Um, and then the other option would be, oh, sorry, was um. Flex base subgrade, and it's a little more expensive, but I'd be looking at a hundred and thirty thousand concrete. And eighty-two thousand three hundred for asphalt. Um, you know, that's obviously y'all's decision. Uh, there's pros and cons to asphalt versus concrete, or concrete is more expensive upfront, but could have a longer lifespan. However, asphalt, that's gonna be predominantly probably used mostly for uh employees. So it's not gonna be used a lot, um, other than when we have our special events or things like that. So those are are two options, and um, I'll be happy to um answer any questions if I can, I'll be uh. For those.
Well, that's once we take a look at this, what we need to remember. I take consideration is, it's not that she only had twenty parking spaces available, you know, maybe only four or five would be used per day. The issue to that parking lot is not going to be turned, the longevity. If you look at the numbers down here, uh. The compaction, I don't know if Chris would notice, but uh. You know, if they used to set soil compaction, I think both the state requires like ninety PSI.
I'll go with that.
Because I know if anyone that's had any experience with driveways. I challenge you to find one Bartonville of asphalt that does not have cracks. The reason, one of the things that we must make sure of last year, and extremely we know this with the native spacing in there, that. The thing that is going to, the longevity of that is going to be your subbase. And the compaction. Because you've got clay soils underneath this that's gonna leak, and every asphalt that I've looked at in my ten and eight years with it. I've never seen one that did not crack, cracks in case moisture, water gets down in there. It freezes. Well, if you don't see it properly and get on immediately, it won't have more problems, you look and you. The the basic price of. And I think there's one, look on the second column sheet down there, at, on item number four, it's got the concrete pavement. I think this is an error, they got down to sixty-six fifty square yards. Really what they're looking at is in concrete, that's gonna be seven hundred and thirty-eight yards of concrete. I think they just, they just.
Six hundred square foot of six inch concrete pavement, is that what you're looking at?
And the six inches of, see up up above, they've got six inches of pavement. And that's sixty-six fifty, that's at ten dollars a uh, square foot. That asphalt, I mean, the.
What they're suggesting.
Concrete, I think it's just type of that, the, the, uh. It's gonna be seven hundred and thirty-eight yard, keeping the old of the concrete, and that's gonna be ninety dollars a yard. And and that concrete, that comes after their number, which, which is, means thirty-five, four, sixty-six is for asphalt. See the asphalt, well, here's a choice to make it real simple.
So.
In other words, forty-seven dollars a yard for asphalt, or you're gonna pay ninety dollars for concrete. You're only looking at, what is it? Uh, eight thousand dollars difference in cost versus asphalt versus concrete. And there's.
Seventy-five thousand to one of Civics, if you're looking at the other one, it's, it's.
But you look at the concrete, some of it is concrete, so.
Yeah, the 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 chart's kind of hard to read, because the top one is about, with the two different charts, top and bottom are about the subgrade, not about the material.
Right.
So the top one is with the compacted subgrade, the bottom one with the flex based subgrade, the red number is indicate the prices for asphalt, black number is for concrete.
That's right. Saying is, if you look at the top one, it says concrete subtotal of the, of the first grade with compacted subgrade. All we're doing is adding six inches of, of base to it, and you're coming up with a much better product. And I think it's a no brainer as to why we would even entertain doing this asphalt versus concrete, because. Your asphalt is gonna break up, no matter whether you drive on it or not, because that soil is gonna move back here. And you're gonna have, uh, you can't be thinking about how many cars are going to come, because that's not gonna affect the performance, it's gonna be the subsoil.
Yeah, it's gonna crack, it is.
But it's not gonna break up like asphalt would.
Not a client agree with you, and I think if the. The subgrade is really relying, so if this is we know better by now, fix it up, grow it down, grow it hard, you know that we shouldn't just put back to dirt, back to dirt down there and call it good.
Right.
We need to give it flex space, from my opinion, and if we think that concrete, your experience outweighs anybody that.
I'm saying, it should be an easy sell to the citizens.
So you're suggesting.
They all know that asphalt, what concrete will do if you look at. Except, we'll see what they're doing over there versus our asphalt, there's no comparison.
That's funny. What is the flex space? Is that jail grid or something different?
No, flex issues is, right.
Um, okay, yeah.
It, it's uh, it's basically, I call it road mess. Road, road mess.
But it, personal experience with asphalt, it's like playing sand, our driveway, we had a really long driveway and we had. We done three pounds and twenty-five year leave, and it's still. So.
And we don't know, and I'm not proposing we spend money to find out, is we don't know what the heave is back here on the soil track. So the best way to get around that is dig it out, put in your flex space, compact it, put in your flex space and put the concrete in. There, you're, you're going, because when I built my house, I spent ten thousand dollars just for the soil test. So I don't want to spend that, I'm prepared.
So y'all want to move forward with this?
I think we should.
Yeah.
I think it's gonna benefit.
I don't think it's gonna ever get any cheaper.
Yeah.
And you know what we're facing because of the attitude of what we had to, you know, being easily next door. So we might as well get it done and get over it and.
And we've got the motion board.
Right.
If, that we don't have to ask for someone else permission or business.
Uh, thanks specifically, what we're talking about is a hundred and thirteen thousand dollar option back, the, the concrete parking lot, the six inch block space.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and and move forward with this. There are options on how we want to find this. We have a couple of options there that we can look at. Um, um, either doing a change order. Uh, with our current face two, we also have some other, we have the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in uh street repair, or we have the. or we have the seventy thousand dollars in contingency. Uh, so those are one of the things we may need to look at, which one's gonna be best, but if you know what a new forward, I can bring back, um.
The two fifty, because the project we have going down was a lot less than what we.
It was, we budgeted a million dollars yesterday, we budgeted a million dollars, it came in at one thirteen, and we did a seventy thousand dollar contingency. We have spent twenty thousand, by the way, on the contingency to move a tree, and then we, there were some other expenses for the culvert that they had to do some reinforcement. I think the, the materials were a lot more expensive than anticipated, but we're still under budget there. But I just want to let y'all know, you just, uh, we, we do have the funding, because we can put it in that two hundred and fifty.
The seventy five thousand, that's, you were talking about this, the fund for renovations, is that what you're?
No, we have four, uh, yes, we still also thank you for reminding me. We have four, we had a fifty thousand dollar for capital improvement, we've spent six thousand.
We spent the full respect for the tree removal.
For the tree removal, we spent six, so we have forty four thousand in that fund. So we have enough money to where we can pull for different, um, funds to pay the hundred and thirteen thousand.
I suggest using that fund and then off, and then taking the remainder from the street.
Yeah.
The leftover two percent, yeah.
Okay.
Two hundred thousand, we should.
A lot of them.
Well, I'm.
Since we're here.
Well, I answered that you do one of the thing, Chief.
Yes, sir.
And that is, but we know what the size of that lot will be, I mean, we know seven thousand square foot, but see, could it be eighty by eighty, that's sixty four hundred square foot.
Uh, they sent me that, and I apologize for not having that in the packet, they did send me the layout. And also, I always apologize for not having Chris here, but y'all did a pretty good job going for that P S I stuff, and we'll just, I'm very impressed with that. But I have those numbers that I can send you, because he did the layout, and as far as.
We should, we should, that is because, and this is just to what, I don't know how well, you know, the contractor, with the problem that you've had with him, but it can't, the cost can't be that much more than what's already here. That he did, this thing is to look at the possibilities, is that GeoGrid, what, twenty two foot in width?
One T four.
Okay.
We talked about the G.
Well, you.
Now, it's, well, this check you just out of curiosity, see, with that GeoGrid.
Yeah, it's not that expensive.
I know, if you put the GeoGrid grid back there, now you've already got the six inches of compact, but for GeoGrid on top of it, it's longevity, look at what this, the road you have before has performed with, with that Geo.
And that's asphalt.
Can you imagine what it'd be back here on that concrete?
No, I guess you put on your concrete too.
Also, look at GeoGrid for the concrete, you made a different pricing for this. Well, I thought of the concrete, GeoGrid goes with the asphalt, right?
I don't know, see, I don't know if you just lay it down and.
It's basically, the GeoGrid on the concrete back here, because it was stainless, did it?
Yeah.
We've used it so far with the asphalt, and I'm not sure if they use it.
Well, you know, when you pour concrete slab on a house, you know, you're gonna use tin mill plastic all day long. Now, GeoGrid's gonna let it breathe, and GeoGrid will hold that subsoil, even though we have a base, but they put it down on top, probably the base, underneath the base, and then put the base on top and concrete on top. If, if we could get him the, what is it, eighty by eighty?
That's anyone.
It takes a half the roll, and GeoGrid is something, it's five hundred dollar, why would we not do that?
Yeah.
So I'll get another quote with that, and then bring it back to the next council meeting.
And that, since we already gave them all this for this, this work, this, this we sent to a policy, you just throw in.
You know, that's, yeah, I, yeah, that'd be nice, if they just give us a little, a little something that.
And they said, roll, I think, part of them had that GeoGrid left over on, they didn't, yeah.
Bring it over here, it's the same company's gonna do it.
Yeah.
Do we, we need to make a motion? Yes?
If you want us to move, but if you want us to come back with more information, you can wait on making a motion.
You want them to come back with more information?
I'd have to see the GeoGrid, that's, that's part of them. Um, yeah, and come out.
Chief, I was gonna ask you, um, will this affect any of the parking here for the patrol cars? Or how will that, how will that driveway?
The driveway is gonna go straight out and take like a L, it's gonna go back behind the shed, that's why we did do the shed.
Okay.
Because it'll go back there, so no, it's gonna just go, as you see there, if you just extend our current concrete, where it stops with the, uh, the, the trash cans,
Right.
just go out, it's gonna take a hard right, and it's gonna be back in that area, just basically.
Against the building, or?
No, it's gonna be further out, it will be on the other side of that shed.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're gonna have plenty of room, uh, but we need twenty spaces, what they're.
I don't know if we'd have to reconfigure all this stuff back there.
Yeah, that's what I was.
The design that I've noticed, it goes straight out, just an L.
Okay.
Um, but I'll, I'll have it.
So you, you kind of have a, a design.
Yes, they sent that to me and apologized.
Can I see that?
If you email the.
Sure.
Yeah, I'll, I'll email that to y'all.
Make sure that they're in the technical standing.
For what? No, we're sent this here, we already, we already checked, yes.
Well, we're just, we have to go ahead and get more information for the next meeting, so, we can, we can talk about GeoGrid, see what all come up with on it, okay.
But, and I mean, one, one of the, it's just.
Yeah. He's, looks, going to the post session, he's got, he's got the floor, um, pursuant to the open meetings at chapter five five one, the town council will be in close executive session, fourth, section, third, with the code, section, number one, section five five one, four thousand seven, four personal matters to liberate, consider appointment and employment of public officer, we need with mayor from town. Number two, section five five one, four thousand seven, four personal matters to liberate, consider appointment and employment, evaluating reassignment duties, discipline, dismissal of public officer, employee who with non administrator. Time being seven fifty five, and now we have a meeting in the post session. now administrator. Time being seven fifty-five, and now we're coming into post session. now administrator. Time being seven fifty-five, and now we're coming into post session.